Call of the City Council meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Eve Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here, Corbin being present, will you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 4, 2009?
So moved.
Is there a second on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve a list of bills dated June 18, 2009, for $408,501.93.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin. Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Eve Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Cadella.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
That passes to any citizens wish to address the council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address. Yes, sir. Chief, is the microphone on?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Glenn Close. I live at 37 Fairfax in Fox Lake, and I am here behalf of my mom, who lives at 486 Gilbert Drive in Wooddale. She has a flooding problem with her basement, and it was created by the city's contractor about five or six years ago. They redid the sewer in her backyard. She lives between Gilbert and Forest Preserve, between Prospect and, what is the other?
Brookwood.
Brookwood. And she is basically the bottom of the funnel in that block right now. The city's contractor about five or six years ago redid the sanitary sewer between the backyards there, and since then, she's had a problem with flooding. And I have the dates that she's had insurance claims on. There's been six insurance claims since they've done that, since the flooding has started. I've talked to Mr. Dave Graff and Mr. Wally Douthwait, and I thought we had an agreement, because I've been talking to everybody that I could at the village, and they agreed that they would run a sewer line up to the front yard, and then they would split the cost of running it to the backyard, basically. But then when they put it in writing and sent it back to me, they didn't say anything about splitting the cost of the rest of it. This is the city's problem because it was created by the city's contractor when they redid the sewer. So I'm hoping that the city will take a little bit more of an interest in trying to resolve this. I found out since we've started this, since I've been calling the city, which started last year in '08, that my mom's neighbor has a bigger problem with flooding than my mom does. But I didn't find this out until just recently. So I'm just hoping to get the city more involved and to get them to live up to what their responsibility should be, because the situation was created by the city's contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Close. Mr. Douthwait?
Mr. Close is partially correct in what he says. The city engineer and I went out to his mother's property several months ago, looked at the situation, and agreed verbally that the city would extend a sewer, sanitary sewer line from Brookwood West on Gilbert to the property line between his mother's property and the property that he referred to, just to the west. In exchange for that, when that was done, Mr. Close's mother would be responsible for extending a sewer lateral or service line from the rear property line out to the front to tie into the lateral that we would pay for and install. It was never our intent, nor did we ever say that we would spend city money on private property. Our contribution would be to extend the lateral from Brookwood West to the property line. We put that in writing and sent that to Mr. Close to execute, and once that's been executed, then our Public Works Department will go out there and make the necessary construction to alleviate the problem. But it's not the city's policy to spend any money on private property. Our contribution to try to solve this problem would be to extend that sewer lateral on city right away to the property line. I consulted with our city attorney, and he advised me that it was not in the city's interest to spend city money on private property. So our contribution would be to take it to the property line, and Mr. Close's responsibility would take to install a service line from the rear of the property up to the front. And that's where we stand. I had a conversation with Mr. Close about two weeks ago and reiterated the city's position in that regard.
Mr. Close, do you have additional comments?
Yes, I do. The day that Mr. Douthwait and Mr. Graff came out, they did agree to pay half of the cost of extending it from the front yard to the backyard where there would be a manhole with a sewer cover for the water to go into. It was, that day I talked to Mr. Roy Wesley. He came by about an hour later, and I explained the whole thing to him, that what they had agreed to. In addition to paying for half, I said to him, "Could you leave your machine here, the backhoe that they used to do this, and then I could use that, you know, just leave it here overnight, they'll pick it up the next day, and I could use that?" And they said, "Sure." And then I said to Roy that day, I said, "I know they're not going to leave the machine. Once they go back and, you know, try and work this all out, that they're going to say, oh, the liability of the village leaving its machine in this, you know, that they'll come to some other agreement. Either they'll dig the trench, or they'll say, well, you just rent the machine." But it's after they talked to the city attorney that they decided that they shouldn't be paying for half or doing any of this other stuff that they originally had agreed to and that we had shook hands on. I don't know what else to say at this point, other than, you know, they're calling me a liar if they're saying that's not what we agreed to, and I take offense with that.
Mr. Douthwait?
Mr. Close, we've been over this four or five or six times, and obviously, we have a misunderstanding, if I may use that word, in terms of what was said. I did not agree to spend any city money on property that was private. I certainly did not agree to allow one of our city pieces of equipment to sit on your property so that you could use that. That's a significant liability issue. And, I mean, we've gone over this more than once, and you understand what I have told you with respect to what the city's position was. That position has not changed, and when you want to sign or have your mom sign that agreement and get it back to me, we'll start work. But my position is consistent and has been consistent, and we're not going to spend city money on private property, and we're certainly not going to allow the city to lend you a backhoe for you to do that work. That's where we are. I mean, it hasn't changed since we initially discussed that. That's my position. That's what we sent you in writing. If you want to go along with that, that's fine. If not, that's your call.
Right. The only thing that I want to add to that...
Just a minute, Mr. Close. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, with respect to the issue, this city cannot go onto private property, use public funds to make those improvements. They're not allowed to do that under law. The city is a creature of statute, and as a creature of statute, it only has those powers that are conferred upon it by the Illinois Legislature. That is not one of the powers that has been conferred upon the city. So the city's not allowed to do that. What they've agreed to do is in the agreement that I sent to you, it was as Mr. Douthwait had indicated. That's all they can do under the law. They cannot perform work on private property for private individuals. With respect to the equipment, that is, that equipment cannot be used. That'd be to say, you know, we'll take a school bus.
I understand all that.
There's a liability issue, and there's also improper prohibited use of public funds for a purely private purpose, which is also prohibited by law. So that cannot happen as a matter of law.
Right. And I knew that when we talked about it, but I thought, you know, I've seen this kind of thing where it just, it gets done, you know, to resolve it. But this is a situation that was created by the city's contractor. So I see that the city has created this situation. I think the city should resolve this situation. That's, from the beginning, that's what it boils down to. The city created the situation through its contractor. When they redid the sanitary sewer, the city has to resolve the situation. How it gets resolved, if they dig a trench where the water used to go because it got, the lay of the land got changed, or if they want to put an additional sewer in, or many different ways it could be resolved, I don't care. I just want to get it resolved. The city created this situation. I believe that they are responsible to resolve the situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Close. Does anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? Yes, sir. If you go to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Slapinski. My wife and I own the property at 301 South Cedar Avenue, over in the second ward. I also own the Barbary Beach Gift Shop at Wooddale Station. I know some of you have been there. Thank you. You know, there was a bad flood in this town back in September, and we all know about it, and I lost a lot, like a lot of people in this town did. I had to replace a washer, dryer, heating unit, just about everything in the lower level. I have pictures of all of this. I actually have video, given a copy of it to Roy. Actually, Mr. Douthwait has a copy of it now, too, in the last 72 hours. You know, that was nine months ago, and I'm not looking for anybody to feel sorry for me, because there's a lot of people that took a lot of damage in this town back in September, but I have a lot of concerns about what I've seen happen since then, namely, the fact that nine months later, the cause of the problem still exists. It's still there. And I've talked to a lot of people in this town about it, and so have a lot of other people on South Cedar Avenue. The cause of the problem being is the large quantity of water that drains off the abandoned, what I call the abandoned Klein Home subdivision. I'm not sure Klein owned it at the time. I think it's got its name on it now. But on the backside of that property, I mean, just 20, 25 acres, I don't know how much is there, they cut down all the trees. Not all of them, most of them. They graded the property, and when the bottom fell out of the economy, of the real estate market, they left. I don't know who owns the property now. It's really none of my business. But the problem is, is that that water, whenever you get, I figure the level's about an inch and a half, two inches of rain. Whenever more than an inch and a half, two inches of rain comes down, the water builds up on that property because it's higher than South Cedar Avenue, and it drains off, and it comes between the two homes across the street. I have video of that. If you guys want to watch it, feel free. If anybody says they don't have a copy of it, I made about eight copies of it, and I have them, if anybody wants to see it. Took a long time for us to recover from that flood, and the mold problem kept recurring, just won't go away. We spent a lot of time, not to mention money. We finally got a professional quote and found out it would be quite expensive. Basically, we would have to rip out the whole downstairs, all the drywall, re-stud it, have all of the insulation replaced. And the decision that my wife and I had to make was, well, why do we want to do that? Because the problem is still there. The block still floods, no matter what we told and talked to people around town. You know, back in March, there was a flood warning issued, and we hadn't made a decision on whether to repair the house, try to sell the house, try to leave, but we were concerned about that there was a flood warning. It was on a Friday night in March, and I called, at the time, candidate Roy Wesley for some advice, and he said, you know, "You got to call the city when that happens and try to get some sandbags." I did. I called the non-emergency police number. I was told that everybody in the city had gone home. And got a call back from the police dispatcher on duty, and I didn't have an easy time, to be quite honest with you, and I was quite amazed by this, to be honest with you. The head of Public Works finally called me back and said that if I wanted sandbags, that he would send a couple of guys into the city garage and make some sandbags up. Me and my wife spent four, five hours sandbagging that house that night before the rain came down, so it didn't flood again. Didn't really feel right about doing it myself. I thought I could get some help, but we did it. And the sandbags have been there ever since, because the problem still exists. Ladies and gentlemen, there's water that's going to come off of that property, it's going to come onto South Cedar. I got the lowest house on the block, unfortunately, and every time there's more than two inches of rain, it's going to happen. Big problem was this past week. I was alerted by an alert neighbor on the block that the city had come and taken all the sandbags from in front of my house. Had to make a half a dozen phone calls, and I kind of got to the bottom of it from, I got several different stories from several different people, put it all together, and it turns out that Alderman, who doesn't even represent my ward, called Public Works and told them to do it. Why, I don't know. I still don't know, really. I've talked to several of you individually that were involved in this in the last 72 hours, and I've gotten some apologies from some people, and the sandbags are back in front of the house. So unfortunately, I mean, you know, if we would've got four inches of rain the other night, like Joliet did, my house would've been underwater again, as probably several other people on that block. So, you know, for you guys to go out and just take sandbags, you, you know, my understanding is that you got bad information from a neighbor who said that my house was abandoned. Well, it might be unoccupied, but it's not abandoned. I still own it. It's still my property. You guys went out and took the sandbags away, exposed it to damage. It didn't happen, but the sandbags are back nonetheless. But the problem still exists. Problem still exists. That water is still going to run off that property. The next time this city has two or three inches of water, South Cedar's going to fill up with water. Now, I know you guys have sent the city engineer out there, and the guy's looking in the sewers. It's not the problem. I've been telling people what the problem is for nine months. Roy especially, because now that he's the Alderman, he's taking the brunt of that from me, and he really shouldn't have, because it happened before he was the Alderman there. But, you know, guys, my sandbags are there, and if somebody complains, I don't know that there's law against them being there. If there is, somebody tell me and write me up. I don't care anymore. Because you know what? That house is going to get foreclosed on, because I can't afford to rent a piece of property on the other side of town and still pay the mortgage on a damaged house that makes no sense to fix, because you haven't fixed the problem. Okay? That house goes into foreclosure, my good credit is going to go down the tubes with it all. And if that happens, I won't be able to afford to keep my store open. So you won't get any tax revenues from it either. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Slapinski. Did you say you had some photographs you wanted to pass around? If so, you can start them off with Alderman Shockey.
He's got a DVD.
Alderman Wesley?
The manager has the photo.
I've got a DVD that Mr. Slapinski gave me. I will make copies and send them out tomorrow for all of you to take a look at.
Very good. Alderman Winger?
Have we looked at the Klein property and if there is some inappropriate runoff there and looked into that?
I have not yet. This hit my radar screen yesterday or the day before. I met with Mr. Slapinski at his business yesterday and talked to him about this. Mr. Graff and I are going to go out there and take a look and see if there's anything we can do. One of the complicating issues is the fact that the Klein property has not yet been annexed. It's unincorporated to Page County, so there's some limitation that Dave and I haven't had a chance to talk about yet in terms of what exactly we can or can't do. Dave, can you expound on that?
Mr. Graff?
If I can jump in. I have walked the Klein property. There's been no grading change that I can see, the natural drainage boundary. Somewhere through the middle of the Klein property, and half of it goes west towards Wooddale Road, half of it goes back east towards Cedar. Doesn't look like there's been any change with that. A lot of trees have been cut down, there's evidence of that. Looked like there were still a lot of dead trees on the property, too, so they might be taking some more down. But I don't believe that natural drainage patterns have been changed, at least there wasn't any evidence of that.
Okay, but in terms of, is there too much runoff, like an unnatural amount? It sounds like something has changed, and it might not be human intervention that changed it, but something, it sounds like, has changed.
Well, the tree removal was the only thing that I could see. Even looking at the old topographic maps of the city, it still shows the drainage divide where it is today and where it, I didn't survey it, but just eyeballing it where it appears to be now.
Alderman Cadella?
I've spoken with the people that live directly next to the Klein property, and they don't seem to be under the impression that any regrading has happened. But Mr. Graff is right, the tree removal is huge. That's what I've been fighting for the two years I've been up here. We don't realize how much water tree roots actually absorb when you're talking about a 200-year-old oak tree. To remove 70% of them on a property, and the scrub, too, makes a huge difference. I've spoken to people on South Cedar, and a lot of them feel that there was always a problem, but that it got worse in the last few years. And the only thing that's really changed in that area in the last few years is that tree removal. That's huge. It is, it has an immensely negative impact on the surrounding area, and Mr. Douthwait is right. It's been my understanding since day one that that being county property, there's very little, if anything, we can do about it right now.
Alderman Wesley?
I think before we go any further with this, I think we need to see these pictures and to see actually how much water is coming through these, through this property. And like Wally said, we'll have them tomorrow, and then we could address it then, and I think that's the appropriate thing to do on it, because we're just throwing things out right now. There is a lot of water that comes through there, though, so.
Alderman, Eugene Wesley, you want to add that on as a future item on one of your Public Works agendas?
Sure, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Slapinski. Anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? Hearing none, I do not have any written communiques. Next item is mayor's report, update on Prairie Fest 2009. Mr. Mermis?
In your packets this week, you received quite a few documents to help you get acquainted with what has been completed so far, leading up to Prairie Fest in August. I thought that would help facilitate discussion tonight and maybe answer some of your questions that you had ahead of time. Really, tonight, I'm just kind of shooting for an answer, a question and answer session. I'll try to answer the questions as best as I can tonight. If there's any I can't answer tonight that you have, I'll take them back to our consultant, SEM, tomorrow, and I'll get those answers to you as quick as I can. So I'm just really turning it over to you for any questions that you may have about Prairie Fest.
Mr. Mermis, as you know, as this is rebroadcast for the citizens at home, why don't you give an overview of what is contemplated for Prairie Fest, the dates and the bands and the events?
Sure.
And what is featured this year?
Sure. The 2009 Wooddale Prairie Fest will be Friday, August 14th, through Sunday, August 16th. The hours will be Friday from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Saturday from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. New to this year's event is every minute that the fest is open, there will be a band playing. The city has secured many good bands. Bands such as Heartache Tonight, Infinity, The Fairlands, Ides of March, The Buckingham's, Excide, and Seventh Heaven are the bands for this year. There'll also be fireworks on Saturday night at a quarter to 10:00. There'll be a lot of good food. There'll also be a carnival this year. The carnival will be open for every minute the fest is open. So there's a lot of exciting things happening at this year's fest.
Alderman Shockey?
We did receive the memo on the additional banners that you were talking about, and the question I have is that you do state that the banners will have a removable patch for the dating on it so that we can use them again in future years. I'm just wondering what that additional patch is costing and if it's part of the $4,150 for the 20 banners that you're talking about.
I can answer that question now or we can wait until we get to that item, because it was a separate item on the agenda. So I could answer it now or we could wait.
Would you go ahead and answer it now?
The patches are $20 each.
Forty?
Twenty dollars each.
Twenty. So 20 times 20 banners?
Four hundred for patches.
Four hundred dollars.
If we did 20 banners.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
Mayor, I just have one question. I noticed on Saturday, the band's going to play at 8 o'clock, The Buckingham's, and the fireworks is going to be at 9:45. Are they taking a break in between there when the fireworks is being played or no?
I would think that they would have to, yeah, and then start up again when it's done.
Okay. The other question is a 50-50 pot. Who's running raffle for 50-50?
The logistics for the 50-50 raffle pot and for the alcohol sales are still being worked out, and the legalities are still being looked at by Attorney Bond, so we don't have any final answer on that yet.
Alderman Wesley, before you go on, let me go to Alderman Police, because he has a comment on the 50-50 raffle.
That's fine, I may have some more questions.
Alderman, please.
Just a suggestion for the 50-50 raffle. If maybe possibly have either like the Boy Scouts or Wooddale Baseball, Soccer, Basketball, maybe Historical Society, Fenton Choir, somebody selling the raffle tickets and they get, they split basically 25% of that for selling the tickets. Just, so it'd be 50 to the winner, 50% to the winner, and then 25% to the organization who's selling the raffle tickets, and 25%.
Mr. Mermis?
Actually, I wanted to point out, too, that there's actually an error in my memo. It says that staff is expecting eight food vendors, and that two have already signed up. We're only anticipating six food vendors, and two have signed up. The two that are signed up right now are Salt Creek and Greek Delights. So instead of eight, it's six.
Alderman Wesley?
Does that mean, are we putting a restriction on how many food vendors could come in, or is that?
No, I mean, space-wise, we think that six would be an ideal amount.
Has the company started looking for food vendors yet?
Yes, they're doing that now.
So far, we have, the other question, Mayor, may I have one more question?
Alderman Wesley?
The other question is a sponsorship. How much has the city raised for sponsorship? I noticed we only have one sponsorship so far. What's the status on that? And who is doing the follow-up now that one of our staff members has left?
I'm glad you asked that question. As you see in your packet, staff did start reaching out to community members in May. They sent out a sponsorship packet, and then another follow-up letter in June. So far, SEM has gotten $3,500 in sponsorships. The city had $5,000 until today. I actually made some significant additions to the website, created a whole section on Prairie Fest with vendor information, sponsorship signups, band biographies. Took me pretty much all day. An hour after I was completed, Deputy Clerk Malone came into my office and said she had somebody on the phone wanting to sponsor the event. They saw the website, so we got another $1,000 just today, a couple hours ago. So now the city has $6,000.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Shockey?
If I remember back to when that gentleman from that organization came in and talked to us, he, I thought he practically guaranteed that he would have enough sponsorship to cover at least his cost. That's, evidently, that's not in writing, I take it. It was just his talking.
The estimated sponsorship that they thought they would bring in, I think, was around $20,000 to help offset their costs. So far, there's been $3,500. However, they're seeing with the difficult times this year that companies are waiting until two or three weeks before the fest to then go ahead and sponsor it. So they're still thinking that they will get at least $10,000.
If I may?
Alderman Shockey?
But there's nothing in the contract saying they have to get so much.
It would be impossible to guarantee sponsors, I mean.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mermis, I came in new here, so the question I have is, the city's getting, doing the sponsors themselves, trying to get the sponsors themselves, correct?
The city is trying to get sponsors as well as our management company, so we're both trying to get sponsors.
Okay. I'm from, I was with ITESC Alliance.
Okay. I'm from, I was with ITASK Alliance, and what we did over there for sponsorship, they would give tickets to the carnival rides in return for sponsorship. So they would get so many tickets for the carnival ride for their employees, or for food vendors, or whatever. Are we doing anything in a situation like that to give back to them, to encourage them to sponsor?
We're, we're just starting now to look into other avenues, other than, you know, the standard sponsorships, trying to get more money for the fest. So that's something that we're just starting now. We still have two months to go, so we're still anticipating getting some more dollars.
Okay. Just so you can put that in your memory bank there. Thanks.
Alderman, please.
Another question on the carnival, in regards to the carnival. Is there going to be like wristbands, like whenever, 11 to four or something for their families, Saturday and Sunday, stuff like that?
When we originally talked about the carnival, I think that was mentioned, and, you know, that's something that we could, we could do. I mean, I don't have the exact details, but I'm sure we can do that.
And, follow-up?
Alderman, please.
And as far as the, the management company, they're going to handle, they're, basically, they have somebody watching or collecting the money for the carnival and, and the games, or just the rides?
As part of their management fee, they have a account auditor that sits with the carnival company that, that takes in the tickets, and they monitor them the whole time, if that's the way we want to, if that's the way we want to do it. I mean, we could alter that, but that's the standard that they, that they do.
The city may need volunteers for those citizens that would be interested in participating to help us with carnival sales, assuming we take on that obligation, and to help us with the beer ticket sales. So anybody wishing to participate to make this a successful event, that would be greatly appreciated. And we all also are offering a discount for any local merchant who would like to be one of the vendors for Prairie Fest. I think their booth rate is $150 if it's a local merchant. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's the same as last year.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Murmas. That brings us to manager's report.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Shockey?
Number one, as well as number three.
Number one and three will be removed, which leaves us with only one item, so may I have a motion to approve contract award Engineering Resource Associates for the Oak and Potter Water Main Design and Construction Engineering in an amount not to exceed $40,245. Is there such a motion?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?